How are you doing? Hi, my name is Beth Durmond. I'm the president of the McKenzie PTA. And we would like to welcome you to the Eldred Central School District's Meet the Candidates night. We are very lucky in that we live in a school district where we have two wonderful people who are willing to run for our school board and who care about our students and care about our community enough to give up their time to run for the school board. So, tonight, we get to meet them, we get to hear what they have to say, and then, you guys, if any of you have any questions for them, we will have a question and answer period as well. Okay? So, how this works is that each candidate will have the opportunity to address you all, and they have five minutes to speak. I'm a stickler, five minutes. And where they'll, you know, talk about who they are, their platform, why they're running, all that good stuff. After each candidate speaks, then there's going to be a 15-minute period of time where the audience can ask questions of specific candidates. During that time, they have just a few, does it say how many? No. So, I'm gonna say, like, just take a few minutes, you know, to answer the question. You don't, it's just because it's a 15-minute period of time, so I am gonna ask you guys to keep your answers to the point. Thank you for that, ahead of time. And when you do ask a question, please, if you could, speak loudly, so that way, you can be heard on all the different recording devices. Also, state your name and where you live, so that way, that can be in the record as If we're all good, I am going to call Mr. Doug Reiser and Ms. Allison Wagner to come up. And Mr. Reiser, we are going to ask you to speak first tonight.
You'd like this at the head of the class.
Yeah, I know.
Why don't you just sit over here?
I know, you normally sit there.
Can, how do you want this?
I think that maybe you would wanna stand right in the front.
Oh, I didn't want to do that.
I'm sorry. Don't ask if you didn't wanna keep the distance.
You're gonna make faces to me.
I promise I will not. I'll smile supportively.
You will?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Pardon my bad.
It's okay. I've done my speech over at the side.
So, the worst thing on this planet is speaking before a crowd, just so you know. Okay? My name is Doug Reiser, and I'm running for reelection for the Eldred Central School Board of Education, for which I've served two terms, seven of which is the president. Seven years, the president. My life changed the day Charlotte Gregory came into the gym where I was coaching basketball and asked me, asked to see me for a minute. So, after practice, I run in, speak to Charlotte. Charlotte said, "I need you to run for the Board of Education." I was like, "Yeah, no." I enjoy coaching basketball. She said, "Well, you can still coach basketball, we just can't pay you." I said, "Well, that's not a deal breaker," you know, so, anyway, I go home, I talk to my wife, my wife says, "Are you out of your mind?" So then, I seek counsel from my friends. I talked to Ray Henry, who was on the board. Ray wouldn't sign my petition. Charlie Donnelly, who I have the utmost respect for, he said, "No way, I wouldn't put you through this." Despite all this, I felt like this was my way to serve, my way of, my community service, okay? I'm not a fireman kinda guy. I can't respond to emergency in a good way, so, I'm sorry. So, this, to me, this is community service, so I do this where folks that are more apt are firemen. So, da-da-da-da-da. So, the day I handed my petition, my wife said, "I thought you weren't, you know, I thought we talked about this, I thought..." No. I said, "Well, you know, I decided." So, the next day, she goes to Lancaster and comes home with a sewing machine. I said, "We didn't talk about this." She said, "Yeah, and we did talk about the Board of Ed thing." So, she got, I ran for the school board, she got a sewing machine.
I went to the sewing machine.
Oh, I don't even wanna talk about it. Yeah, a month's salary. All right, a couple months. So, I've lived in Eldred for most of my life. My folks moved in here, moved here in the fall of 1968, when I started kindergarten. And I graduated in 1981. Don't do the math. In 1989, no, it's not four years, don't do the math, I graduated from New Pulse, okay? So, I was telling these guys earlier, I had to go to school wherever I could commute. So, I go to Ock for a couple of years, 'cause it's closer, and then I go to New Pulse. Bachelors in education, secondary math. So, I take a job teaching math in Middletown for, I don't know, 12 or 13 years, coaching basketball, track, baseball in Middletown, and then, a job opened up a little closer to home in the Saint Valley. I switched jobs, go to the Saint Valley, take a little, you know, take a little, a little different role in the school district. For a couple of years, I was the technology coordinator, and that job sort of evolved into the district data coordinator. So, all the data that is required, which, you know, attendance, it's, it's, it's school, it's student attendance, it's staff attendance, it's staff tenure, it's what everybody does for a living, it all gets uploaded to the state bi-weekly, excuse me, two times a month, and, you know, error reports and such follow. So with that, in July of 2015, the professional organization that I belong to, Daytag, recognized me as the Gerald de Mauro Award for Excellence in Education. And this award recognizes an individual who has made significant contribution to the educational performance of students, which, in my line of work, that's a really big deal. Okay, so, I'm married, live in Berryville, my wife, two children, Patrick and Kate. Patrick and Kate both graduated from here, 2011, 2016. Patrick graduated from SUNY Cortland, or, excuse me, SUNY Oswego. He's a technology teacher, technology education teacher in Pine Bush. Katie is currently in Cortland, pursuing a degree in English education. Blah, 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 skip that. So, I just wanted to, I just wanted to point out a couple of facts, you know, no, no fake news, just a couple of facts, okay? In 2007, here at Eldred, we offered 12 credits in our high school, or, yeah, 12 college credits in our high school. Today, a senior can graduate with 52 credits, making them almost a junior in status when they leave here. That's, believe me, becoming a junior costs a lot of money. In 2007, we didn't offer any AP classes, and today, we offer seven, again. A big deal. In my first year on the Board of Education, the tax levy was $9,940,424. In the 2016-2017 school year, our tax levy was $9,942,042, $1,618 more, which represents a .01627 percent increase, over 10 years. During the same point, point of time, Tri-Valley saw an increase of more than $2 million for 11.5 percent, 11.36 percent. Livingston Manor saw a $1.5 million increase, or 22.9 percent. Roscoe's increase was $883,000, or 21.8 percent. If I'd have known you were coming, I would've done Fallsburg. Two more things. When the tax cap legislation was passed, this is fun fact number four, when the tax cap legislation was passed, I felt that it was unfair that Eldred be held to an artificially low levy limit, because we had to, we had to give back money that previous year, so our tax levy was artificially low by $2 million. So, I felt that was unfair, and I wanted to arrange a meeting with our legislators, Senator Bonisek and Assemblywoman Gunther, to discuss this, hoping that we'd get some kind of reprieve. Result of the meeting was that they were both, they weren't, they weren't willing to go to bat for us and get us some kind of reprieve, you know, in the, in the legislature. However, they were able to provide us with aid in terms of money to the district. And I forget exactly what that, what the amount was that year, but since it worked that first year, we've gone back every year, myself and Mr. Dufour, Dr. We've gone back every year, and today, to date, we've been able to get well over a half a million dollars in additional state aid, additional aid, they call it bullet aid, because it only comes once, from those meetings, that's what the meetings have resulted Two more things, fun fact number five. I feel that, as a member of this board, we've been very progressive. We passed revolutions, yeah, almost, resolutions denouncing the compressor station and high-stakes testing. We passed a resolution supporting a tax exemption for our veterans. And finally, we passed a resolution that preserves a child's right to recess, all of which is a big deal. And the final fun fact, in my ten, in my almost 10 years of service, I've only missed one meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reiser, very much. Ms. Wagner?
Hello, everyone. We meet again. I feel like this is a déjà vu moment, but in a different setting. So, hi, everyone, I wanna thank you all very much for coming here tonight. I know that you've all taken time out of your nights and out of your personal lives to be here, so that means the world to me, because that's what we're here for. We are here to improve this school district and to improve this community, so you being here is the first step in that. So, thank you guys for coming out. So, for those of you in the room who do not know me, my name is Allison Wagner. I know most of you from being in the community and from sporting events and other events here at the school, 'cause I do have a daughter in this school district still. Not near graduation yet, she's only in the eighth grade, but before I know it, she's quickly already on the college track. It's crazy. Yeah, it's crazy. She just met with a guidance counselor, and they're already planning the next four years of classwork, so she can get to Ithaca, which is her goal school, so bless her heart for that. But, in the meantime, I too am a graduate of Eldred Central School, not as late as Mr. Reiser. I graduated in 98 from this district, and at that time, we only offered two college classes, and I did take both of them. So, I genuinely appreciate how many classes we now offer. After I graduated from Eldred, I went on to Hartwick College up in Oneonta, New York. While I was in Hartwick, I earned my Bachelor's of Arts in Psychology, and I minored in Sociology. In fact, while I was at Hartwick, I studied developmental psychology, focusing on school-age children, because I originally thought I was going to become a school psychologist. So, that was where my expertise lied. However, after I graduated, I was quickly sucked up into a not-for-profit, and I found a passion for helping others that was different than working with children and different than working with schools, but I truly, absolutely loved it. So, I served for about 15 years working in the not-for-profit world, and I worked with various agencies in Orange and Sullivan County. I provided services for individuals with developmental disabilities, substance use or substance use disorders, chronic medical conditions, as well as mental health disorders. During my tenure in those fields, I was actually in administrative positions, so I oversaw the budgets, and I knew how to work with grant-funded programs, and I knew how to get through the nuances of those programs, because they're really difficult, and for those that are in the field, they know how hard it can be to obtain grants and how hard it is to maintain those grants once you have them. So, that was my expertise. I did, however, feel the burnout in that field, so I did leave. And when I left, it was on my own accord, and I said, "I just need a break from this." And then, I fell into working at the federal, in the federal government, and now I work for the postal service. For the last three years, I have been a clerk here locally, so I get to see almost all of you every day, which is great. I love my community interaction, and I love when kids come in and they don't know how to fill out an envelope, and I love being able to help them with the most littlest of things. But, more importantly, I like that I can speak one-on-one with people that are coming in, and people come in with all sorts of questions and issues and complaints, and because I've run for the school board and they know that I have a kid here, I tend to be that ear that will listen. So, it's a nice, nice atmosphere, and I like that I have that opportunity to speak one-on-one with the community every day. So, couple of things, my fun facts that I want to dispel. I'm hearing some things, because I'm going door-to-door and I am talking to people like I did last year. One, I do not want to see any teachers being fired. I love the teachers, they teach my child, my child. I want the teachers to stay here. I want to encourage them all to stay here, and I want them to have a happy working environment while they are here. So, that's the first thing. The second thing that I'm hearing is that I want to cut the sports programs and all extracurricular activities. Not true. My child is involved in those sports programs. She wants to go to Ithaca for the performing arts. So, no, I do not want to see any extracurricular programs cut whatsoever. In fact, I want the opposite. I want to increase the funding for those programs. I am thrilled with the amount of money and funds that this board has been able to get for such a little school district as Eldred. My concern is just how those funds are being allocated. That's it. I think that it's time that we start to hold the board and our administration more accountable for how those funds are being allocated, because I think, and the crux of all of this, we are here for the students, absolutely, but I think that the students and the teachers do deserve more from this district. So, I look at things like the leasing of the buses. It's a necessity, it's for the safety and well-being of our students and for our faculty. We need to do things like that. But on the flip side, my concern is, how have we gotten to the point that it is fiscally, we have been so fiscally irresponsible with our funds, that this has now become our only alternative? That's where I'm lying now with my concerns, is I want these things for the teachers, I want these things for the students, I want our school bus drivers to have safe equipment. But on the other side, I have to say, we have this money coming in, that's great, but how's it really being allocated? That is my concern. Of course, I know that we have issues in this, in this community and at the school district. Again, I talk to you almost all every day, so I hear about it all the time. I want you to be able to come to people and come to the board meetings and share your concerns, and I want the board and the administration to actively be doing things to work on these issues. I'm hearing that we have problems with the track field, and we're having problems with the, you know, the sound equipment for the latest play that we just had. The sports programs, of course, would like new equipment and new uniforms. So, these are things that I think that we should really be trying our best to get, and if we can't get them through, through traditional means, then we should be looking outside of this. We should be looking at grants. Dick's, for instance, Dick's Sporting Goods, they have a program where they can do a grant for up to $2,000 for an eligible school district, and they do it continuously throughout the school year. There's no reason we shouldn't be applying for grants. That $2,000 could go towards something, whether it be equipment, whether it be uniforms. That's $2,000, that's not coming out of our taxpayers' pockets, nor is it being taken away from the budget. Also, the library, I just shared recently on Facebook, I know most of you are Facebook savvy, the Scholastic has a program that they do with James Patterson, where there's a $500 grant, you just submit a 50-word essay as to, "This is what I would like to do with this money," and there's $500 that we didn't have, which doesn't seem like a lot, but these things will add up. So, my concern truly is looking at this budget. Where can we, where can we, instead of spend $5, spend $3? And where can we allocate the most funds to our students and teachers that it will serve them the best? So, that has been my, my big, my big push for running again this year. Again, I don't pretend to have all of the answers. I have been talking to the majority of you in this room, and then some, and people are continuing to give me new ideas, and, "Oh, have you looked at this?" And, "Oh, have you looked at this?" I picked up a pizza the other night, and I was given information about grants. So, that's the stuff that I think is so amazing about this community, because this community wants this school to succeed. I want this school to succeed. I want our teachers to have all the supplies that they need. I want the building to be state-of-the-art. I want kids to have tablets to use every day. I know these are far-fetcheding ideas, but there are things that we could do. There are ways that we can try to get this money and reallocate and repurpose some of our funds. I want us to have safe equipment. These shouldn't be things that we have to get to a point now where we're saying, "Okay, we've got a problem, our buses aren't passing inspection." We should have some accountability for how we're spending our funds. The school needs to start looking at things a little differently, so I think it's time for a change, I think it's time for a fresh set of eyes. I think it's time for somebody who is not afraid to say, "Hey, I heard about this, can we look into that?" I am, if nothing but, persistent. So, I look forward to meeting the rest of you and talking to you, and if any of you have any questions or concerns or comments, by all means, if you don't wanna bring them up here, because you're afraid of public speaking, you can certainly meet me afterwards, or you can call me, I'm happy to give out my phone number to any of you. But, that's all I have. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Ms. Wagner.
Try to keep it to the...
So, we would love to take some questions for the candidates.
We can talk after.
Yes, Mr. Segal.
Mr. Reiser?
Yes, sir.
Oh, Brian, can you, can you state where your name and where you live?
My name is Brian Segal, I live in Berryville.
Thank you.
Doug, your wife bought a sewing machine, my wife bought a horse, so that's...
I prefer the sewing machine.
The horse requires way more maintenance.
Oh, I know.
Yes. Hi, Mary Kato, I live in New Orleans. Both candidates mentioned about the college credits and increased college credits, which is a really great thing. In 2008, there was only about 20, now we have about 50, we have AP courses. What's your vision of our school five years from now?
Doug, would you like to start?
No, go.
Okay. Five years from now, I would love for this building to be technologically advanced even more so than it is. I would love for us to be able to incorporate more college classes in here, so that perhaps, I know there's a lot of state schools that are now doing, you can graduate in two to three years with a BA instead of a four, instead of doing four years. I would love if we could somehow connect with one of these schools and offer that, that in the time that you're graduating high school, you could also be coming out with a bachelor's. That would just be phenomenal. And I know that's way down the line, but these are talks that we could be having. Five years from now, I would love us to, to be a little bit more state-of-the-art. I would love for us to keep engaging the community that, that we are, that, that's my, my vision is...
Do you just see Eldred here in five years?
Absolutely. I don't wanna see Eldred go anywhere but here. This is my school, I moved back here so that my daughter could have the same experience that I had here.
What about 10 years?
In 10 years? I don't foresee there, there being a problem as to why the school could not be here, with more accountability and looking at the budget, and like I said, instead of paying $5 for something, if we can get the same thing and spend $3, we need to be doing things like that. We need to be looking at, at the budget. We need to give our teachers everything that they need, yourself included, to make our students succeed. Happy teachers, happy work environment, everyone's a win. The students should have everything that we could possibly give them. I do not foresee this district closing in five years, nor 10 years, nor do I want to see it closed in five or 10 years. The same goes for McKenzie, too, 'cause I know that that's been a hotly contested topic around town, just, 'cause again, people talk. McKenzie should be there, it's a great little school. I came to Eldred when it was K-12, we were all in one building at that time, and I remember the little kids, it would, like, you part the Red Sea when the little kids came down the hall for lunch to go to the cafeteria. That was fine, you know, that was, it was what it was. The kindergartners were up there in the trailers...
Yeah, but you were not in the same building.
No, the kindergartners were up in the trailer...
And the modulators were used...
That's right, they were up in the modulators, and downstairs...
They also carried them.
Yeah, downstairs were the little, you know, the classrooms for the little kids, and I was here when McKenzie did open.
Right.
So, I went through that transition of, "Oh, now, suddenly we have space." So, the seventh and eighth graders went downstairs before the, the whole new addition went on.
Tax cap, you were not in my building.
No, no, we did use the modulators, which are in awful shape right now, by the way. I don't have to tell any of you that. I do foresee the, the school being here, as long as we are fiscally responsible and start being more accountable, there's no reason we couldn't be here.
Mr. Reiser?
I, I feel, I feel the same exact way. However, I just wanna bring to, bring to light the fact that in the last five years, we've dug ourselves out of a tremendous fiscal hole, and had it not been for, had it not been for an inordinate increase in healthcare premiums, this year, we would've relied, like, on very little fund balance to, to fund our 17, 18 budget. And, and five years ago, it, our, not just our fund balance, but our, we, we had to tap into some reserves to stay, you know, to stay, to balance the budget. So, I say that to, to say this, we're not going anywhere. We're not going anywhere. It's never been a conversation that I've had with anybody, except the, the occasional panicked phone call, you know, "I heard we're gonna tuition kids here," you know, and I'm like, "Uh, no, no, absolutely not. The conversation has never taken place, it's not going to take place so long as I'm around." And, and you're right, we, we, back then, no, I wasn't on the school board, but I did live in this community, even when it was K-12 in this building, we had trailers here, we rented space in Berryville and Chahola, I believe.
Chahola.
Okay, so, so we were, we were K-12 in this, in this per se one location, however, we were in all over the place.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Hi, senior first-year teacher in Eldred for twelve-ish years.
Twelve-ish.
Twelve-ish, closely mean on it, yeah. Would you please simply state the three, your top three positive statements about the elementary school, the junior high school, and the district in general?
In regards to the faculty, the...
In your perspective.
In my perspective? Well, I can tie all three into one. It's all about the community, and everybody knows everybody, which could be a good thing or a bad thing, but everyone in the elementary school, the junior high, and then extended into the entire district, which is the community, everyone will help anybody, and that is truly a blessing in this community. It is phenomenal that if someone is in help, need of help, there are people in this community that will step up, and that is across the board, from the, from the teachers and the aides at McKenzie, to the teachers and the faculty that are here at, at the high school. If there is ever a need, this community rallies around people like I've never seen. So, to me, that's, that is the most impressive thing and the most meaningful thing to me about being in this community.
I absolutely agree with that, and then I'm gonna have you be specific to each building and...
Be specific to each building?
Thank you.
Not a problem. I actually have, my other half, he has a child who is in the eighth grade, not the eighth grade, she's eight years old and in the third grade at McKenzie. My daughter got to go through McKenzie from a little bit of fourth, fifth, and then sixth grade. McKenzie is outstanding, that's why I'd like to see that building stay there. Like I said, I, when I was here, we were K-12, and then McKenzie opened, but I never had any experience at McKenzie, because I was too old for it. McKenzie is outstanding. It is a loving, nurturing environment that there is truly, again, I go back to the, the level of caring, from, all the teachers know who all of the kids are, there is always a friendly face when you come through that door. In the mornings, when I'm dropping Lily off at school at, before 8:00 AM, there is always somebody at that front window waving, smiling, saying hello to me, they know who Lily is, and that's, that's amazing. So, that is my direct experience with how great McKenzie is. Anna had some, my daughter Anna, she's now in the high school, she's back there, she's waving. She had some, some experiences in McKenzie that truly put her on the path that she is in now. She fell in love with music in that building, because of Mr. Gloedich, and at the time, it was the other music teacher that we had, and she fell in love with that building, and she fell in love with music, which is what she wants to do for a living. So, I thank that school for giving her those opportunities. Here at the high school, she's here now. I thank the, the school for having the foresight to plan for her to get to... I thank the school for having the foresight to plan for her to get to college already at the eighth grade. So that, to me, is amazing. I'm blessed to have a child who knows what she wants to do at an early age, but she is already talking with the school counselor here and making plans for the next four years to be on a course to succeed and meet that goal. So that is my specific personal relations with both of these schools.
And the district.
And the district as a whole? Let me tell you, it has been a feat doing this campaigning two years in a row now. And this district is nothing short of awe inspiring with what we can do with the money that we are given. I think it is fantastic that we've been able to get the funds that we've been able to, to keep this district going. I think that learning, what I have learned over the last couple of years, has opened my eyes to how much work is involved and how selfless every person on this board truly is, as are all of you in this room, to be involved in this process. It is overwhelming and incredibly time consuming, and it is a thankless job. And I've heard it, just like Doug did, when he was asking for signatures way back when on this petition, people said no because they did not think that anybody should do that job because it is a thankless job. So I commend every single one of them and all of you for attending because it is outstanding that you care enough to be involved in this process. So on the district level, I am awestruck.
Mr. Reiser?
Is there time?
You're sorry? I know I talk.
So Mackenzie, I can sum up Mackenzie with the question that I asked the principals when we were interviewing for the Mackenzie principal position. I asked the principals, I see being the principal of the Mackenzie Elementary School as the best job in the world. Why should we hire you? That's the question that we asked. And I believe that. I believe Mackenzie is just a wonderful place for children. I believe that the staff and the teachers and the whole ambiance that that little building presents is just, it's tremendous, it really is. When you move over to the junior, senior high school, I see it as, you know, a great big open door. I see it as tremendous opportunity for anybody that comes here. No matter what path you choose, if you want to play sports, if you want to be in the arts, if you want to just be a student, you know, a mathlete, you're well received and you're well supported in any avenue you choose. And for the district, the district, so way back when I was taking classes on leadership, the thing that struck in my mind the longest is your most valued asset in a school district, your most valued asset in a school district. You know what it is? It's people. It's absolutely people, which is why this board has always made a commitment to keep people and worry about pencils later. So the district is so great because of its people. That's the bottom line. This is still, public education will always be about relationships. It's always going to be about relationships. It's going to be about the relationship that a child has with an adult, a child has with its peers. Always going to be that. Okay? So we bent over backwards to find the resources to keep people employed. And we've done a great, we've done a great job. We really have. Okay? We've done everything we could to keep people in this building. And, you know, so district to our people, absolutely.
Thank you. Yes, last question, okay? Okay? All right.
Yeah. She got it in.
I just want to clarify something because we've talked a lot tonight about the college credits and the successful kids who go on to school from here and different things. I also need you to know, I'm your Bosse's, Sullivan County Bosse's representative for this school district as well. And one of the things that I am most pleased about, which I want you two to address, I am most pleased about the fact that we support our students who want to go to the Bosse's special programs to get their licenses and different things, welding or electrician or whatever it might be, go into the new visions program, which takes them on to special, trying out new careers. There's so many different opportunities at Bosse's that we, nor any of our Sullivan County schools, we could not provide, nor could the even bigger districts like Orange, Sullivan, I mean, Orange and Duchess and those counties, nobody can provide these specialized services that the Bosse's does. Consequently, we support the Bosse's for our students' sake. I taught or have been an administrator in many different school districts in both Orange and Sullivan and Westchester. And never come across a school district that says, if you want to go to Bosse's, you get to go. Not you're in a lottery and we'll pick your name out and the first 10 that we pick, they're the ones that budget, we have to budget for 10, so too bad if there's 11 or 12 or 13 because there's a budget. Every school district I've ever been in has done that with Bosse's. This school district says, if you want to go to Bosse's for your career, your education, your future, you go. And that's where we put our money. We put our money where we are now, which is our kids. I'd like you both to address, if you will, what you know about Bosse's, what you value about Bosse's, and perhaps what you criticize about Bosse's. But I'd like to get that in because it's not all about college. It's a whole lot about being work ready when you leave school these days.
Try and keep it to a minute and a half, please.
Okay. I'll keep it pretty short and sweet. I commend the programs at Bosse's because you are absolutely correct, Mrs. Bleefernick. Not everyone is destined for the college track. And that's okay. We should be encouraging kids, especially in here in Eldred, because that's what we do. We should be encouraging kids to explore different careers. We should be encouraging them to try different things. Not everyone is going to go to college. There are trade schools. There are jobs that need to be filled by non-college educated people. And that's perfectly fine. That's great. That's the backbone of America. So as far as Bosse's is concerned, keep on going. I love that our students are able to say without having a sense of a lottery or, you know, can I go or not go? When they say they want to go, they go. And we encourage that and we make that happen. So as far as I know, fantastic, keep it going. I have nothing to criticize about it. Done.
Mr. Reiser?
As the son of, the son and grandson of plumbers, I fully endorse the whole Bosse's experience. The reason, the reason that I chose to become a teacher is because I'm just not a plumber. I'm sorry. You know, I didn't, I just didn't want to do it, you know? I could have easily, could have easily had my grandfather's bottle gas delivery business and done the whole plumbing thing and probably be making a whole lot more money than I do today. However, I just, I wanted to, you know, I wanted to choose a different route. But the bottom line is, Carol, I totally support the Bosse's program. I'm amazed that we have so much participation from this, from this district. I'm amazed whenever I go to Bosse's for the annual, you know, the annual dinners, you know, how many of our students are involved in the different programs, you know? They do, they do fine, a fine job for us. And, you know, we need to continue to make use of that.
I think just to piggyback off of that, Eldred does an amazing job at allowing students to grow and allow them to experience different things. Eldred was that for me. I was allowed to explore different areas and I was allowed to try something out. And that is phenomenal. And we still continue that to this day. So being an Eldred alum, that is so awe inspiring. And I thank all of you in this room that allowed my child to have that same experience that I did. And part of that is Bosse's and the college classes and everything else that you all do, the coaches on the field. You guys are amazing. So from a mom, not a candidate running, thank you for all that you do.
Thank you, guys. So I think we're going to wrap up the Q and A part of the evening. Again, I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. I would like to invite you all to stay for the Board of Education meeting that we'll be transitioning into right now. And while we transition into that, I would also like to invite you to please visit the back of the room. There are lots of goodies. Please eat. For some of us, it might be dinner. And so do you guys want to take a few minutes?
Yeah.
All right, so five, 10 minutes. Okay, while we transition over. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Good job.
The meeting of the Eldred Central School Board of Education. Can we start the meeting with a pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberate and justice for all.
1.03 is a misprint. We are, we do not have an additional budget presentation. So we'll go right to reports to the board. Ms. Keegan, our elementary principal?
All right. Good evening. April 19th, we celebrated our third marking period of others assembly with a lot of children receiving recognition. On Friday, April 21st, the Lions Club offered a free vision screening for students under age six. And that was really a great opportunity for our kids to get a free screening. On Friday, April 21st, many of our students were recognized at the Sullivan County Government Center for winners of the 23rd Annual Countywide Alcohol, Tobacco, and Gambling and Drug Abuse Poster Contest. Monday, April 24th through the 28th, we celebrated the Week of the Young Child. And Mrs. Yenney did an outstanding job providing a fun week of activities for students. I think, I thought the highlight was the game day that the parents were invited to come in. And we had eight to 10 parents per family in each of our classes. And that was great. It was fabulous. On Friday, April 27th, the fifth grade students went to the Lackawaxin River Access for the National Park Service. And that was a big hit. The students really enjoyed that field trip. We will have, our last PTA assembly was Jump for Life. That was well appreciated. Mrs. Dearman did an outstanding job for the teacher appreciation luncheon. She was there by herself. She hosted, the PTA hosted, but there was enough food for probably 200 people. And it was really great. And the PTA had it sponsored through Conrad's. I'm looking forward, and I'm sure many of us are, at May 9th, the PTA Walkathon from 11:30 to 1:30 as a fundraiser. And bring your sneakers and all are welcome. And then May 11th, our annual plant sale, just in time for Mother's Day. So we have a lot of great things going on at Mackenzie. And it's been, I will say, Mr. Reiser said it well. Carol leaned over and said, do you remember the question he asked you about your interview? And I said, yes, I do. It truly is the best job I've ever had in my life, and it's a pleasure to work for the district. It really is.
Thank you. Thank you.
Can I say that at the Sullivan County Courthouse, the government center?
Yes.
When you looked at the program, I actually sent the board an email of this because it was just all Mackenzie. It was incredible. The entire program was all Mackenzie. And I saw Mr. Krebs there, so I appreciate that. And, but it was, Liberty was involved as well, but it was like maybe 15 Mackenzies and one little tiny Liberty, and we just dominated the thing. So it's fantastic to see the commitment to the arts. And all the artwork is great, too. But it was nice to know that the kids had the time and that the board and the administration had made the commitment to provide time for the kids to do that artwork. So it's...
I just want to say, I felt so bad about missing the advantage, but I had an appointment that I had been scheduled six months prior and I could not reschedule it. It was the first time I missed it. We do have some beautiful artwork in our Mackenzie lobby, so I invite you all to come and take a look.
So I just have a question.
Yeah, please.
Ms. Keegan, I have noticed, because I have kids in Mackenzie, and so I participate in a lot of these things as a parent, but Mackenzie seems to be doing a lot of different things this year than it's done in the past. And I see a lot of kids out of the classrooms. I see a lot of outside, even at the campus, but even on, you know, field trips and all. And is there some kind of a shift that's making that happen?
I think there is. We're really listening to the thoughts of the Board of Education and listening to the community and realizing more and more that Mackenzie should be a really fun environment for our kids. And we're really teaching socialization and learning how to get along. And we really appreciate, the administration really appreciates the board's viewpoints.
Well, I appreciate it because I think it takes probably some adjustment and some reflection to step back from some of the things that we've been forced to do over all these years where we've asked our teachers frankly for too much. And to give the time, the kids some time to reflect and get outside and learn that way. And I just think that it's, again, I notice it because I'm a parent, guys, you know, but I pay attention as well to the Facebook page and everything. Whatever it is that shifted Mackenzie is, should be celebrated and congratulated. So I thank you for that.
Well, thank you. Thank you.
Anything else, Jen? Our secondary principal report, Mr. Krebs?
Okay, we're going to start off with Mr. Gas has a couple of things about sports in, that are going on in the district. So not too much, but a couple right now, yeah, because we had a few last time.
All right, so sports season, we're kind of winding down towards the end, although we've had many rainouts. The next two, three weeks is going to be pretty hectic. A lot of teams are fitting in their eight-week season into two weeks. So we have a lot of games going on. A lot of things happening here at the high school. I'm sure if you come here any day at 4 o'clock, there'll be softball games down there and baseball games up there. Plenty of stuff to watch. Also, within the last month, we had two of our senior athletes sign their letter of intent to go on and play in college. We had Jordan Levis sign to play at Grove College, which is just outside of Miami City. And we had Noah Carrery sign to play at Queens College, which is in North Carolina. And his intent for him is, he is the first scholarship athlete ever at Queens College. He's the first one ever to sign up. So they're making a deal about that. And that's it.
Thank you. And we have some students to do the student council report.
Should they say who they are?
Introduce yourselves for everyone.
I'm Ella Sherwood. I'm the president of the student council.
Oh, great.
I'm the senior.
Okay.
I'm also a senior and I'm Samantha LaCalle.
So our AP testing has been going on. I'm in two of the AP classes and so far they've been pretty good. The tests are intense, but it's worth it for the college credit. We have prom coming up this Saturday and there's going to be the promenade here, I believe at 5:00 PM. And the student council is planning a community pride day and we are interested in doing a color run. So anyone that wants to do that, it should be in later May.
Community pride. You talk louder.
Oh, very nice. She said, the prom is not this weekend, it's next weekend, so. And the promenade will be taking place here at 5:00. Our prom will be at the Erie and Port Jurvis this year. That's May 13th. She also said that the student council is looking at doing a color run here as part of a pride type of day. So possibly in later. Color run is like a short 5K run, maybe a 3K run where they do things where, you know, they may get colored or sprayed or something. Some type of colors occur depending on the activity that they present.
Okay.
Okay? And she talked about our AP exams. They're going on. Our last one will be on Monday. So we have one tomorrow and one on Monday. The District Prism Concert, that is our concert that encompasses all of our students from the elementary school all the way to the high school with all the ensembles, will be taking place here on May 17th at 6:30 PM. I believe that's the day after the budget vote. Also, Samantha was here. She will be attending a valedictorian recognition ceremony along with probably her mom and dad and maybe her sister, too, at the Sullivan County Legislative Meeting upcoming on May 18th. So we'll be there. So congratulations to Samantha. And lastly, on May 22nd, the Acapulisa will be taking place at the Neeson Theater in Monticello. That's our key element group. That's our key element group, along with another number of other acapella groups will be performing there at 7:00 PM. Again, that's May 22nd. And proceeds from, I don't know if it's from all of it, but proceeds from, some of it are going to the Can't Hurt Steel Foundation or program. So that is occurring, and signs are up, and I don't know if we put anything out on Facebook, but those of you that are looking for information about school, we're doing our best to try to put it on our district website, and if you can, like our Facebook page, we're doing that, and we're also updating a lot of our sports as they happen. So when the teams finish up, our varsity teams finish up a sport, usually the next day, Mr. Gass has been pretty consistent about getting the scores up with some accolades to some of our athletes. So those are some things that have been recently happening here at the Junior-Senior High School. Okay? Anything else for us?
Any questions for us, guys? Okay. Thank you. Our business administrator report from Ms. Lewis.
Well, I believe you all received a copy of in the packet. I just want to go over a couple of things. Basically, I've been working on finalizing all of the budget materials that are required for the vote coming up. I've been reviewing some projects to develop a list of priorities for our facilities and infrastructure this summer. And also, I have been compiling requisitions for next year for some of the purchase of supplies and textbooks and things like that. And I just wanted to be noted that we do participate in the DCMO Cooperative Purchasing Program. We do have the option of just going with New York State contract, but by going through DCMO, we get a better value for our money, and it's important to get multiple bids and have competitiveness so that you can buy more, more items for less money. So we don't just go New York State. It should be noted that we do participate in other cooperative purchasing programs.
How else could we get served by a bakery called Bimbo Bakery? Bimbo Bakery. I'm so proud of us. Bimbo Bakery. That's what it said in there. I had to read it three times. It's the Bimbo Bakery.
Yes.
Because it's the DCMO bid, I'm like, well, we are just, you know, coming up in the world. Bimbo.
I love it.
I know.
And that's about enough.
Ruth, I have a question. And Doug, you might have to chime in on this, Doug, because you might remember, or Bob, but I know back when we were building, or the addition here, I saw a five-year plan at that point, and there were a lot of things on that plan that we probably had done, but I haven't revisited it to know what's still on there, or is it time for a new five-year plan? I don't know.
We just submitted a revised five-year plan two years ago.
Yes.
So we're in compliance with that, and a lot of the projects that were originally noted had been done.
Like the parking lot.
Those were the priorities we tried to address in that one summer. But there are a lot of other things that have not yet been done.
There were, there were things that were three years out and four years out, and I'm wondering if we're still on track with them, or if we're still...
The current version of that plan is on the district website.
Okay, I will go look there. It just occurred to me when you were talking about redoing that.
That's the facilities, facilities use plan.
Okay, thank you.
That brings us to our district report from...
So I just have two items in your packet. You should have this. I was wondering if Mr. Krebs or Mr. Gass would mention it. They did not, so we, Mr. Gass, Mr. Krebs and I had the honor of attending the Orange County Interscholastic Athletic Association Senior Scholar-Athlete Breakfast. This is just pages from that, because it's like a 40-page book, but our honorees this year were Lindsey Kelty and Garrett Coltonback. So I just wanted to make copies of that and share that with you. And the third page of that is David Telgeder. For you Metzvangel, should know who he is, but he was the guest speaker at the event. Okay, and the only other item that I have is, two other items, Mr. Siegel and I had the privilege of attending Troop 102's Eagle Scout Ceremony this past Sunday, and Evan Bijjack, Garrett Coltonback, Matt Smythe, and Joseph Santoro all received their eagle badges. And that was a really, really nice afternoon. We had a good time there, and Brian was kind enough to come up and assist me with giving out the proclamations that you passed back in March. And finally, today was the last day of our math state assessment testing. I don't have the final opt-out rates yet. I haven't gotten that from the two secretaries, but based on preliminary information, it should be on par with what the ELA was, because many of the parents opted out of everything at that time. Might be a onesie or twosie, but once I get the final numbers, I'll email them all to you. Just, I didn't have it in time for the meeting tonight. And that's all I have.
Any questions? Okay. I've spoken enough tonight, so we're past it. That brings us right to public comments, limited to our consent agenda items only. That would be 4.01 to 7.03. For those of you who have not yet attended a school board meeting, a few years ago, we decided to put a public comment before the consent agenda, because the public comment has always existed at the end of the meeting, and so people would get to discuss, people would get to talk about things that we just did business on, and it made no sense, so we decided to put one before consent agenda, okay? So if you could just limit comments to consent agenda, that'd be great, okay? Okay. So that brings us to our consent agenda, 4.01 to 7.03. I read through it pretty carefully. I didn't see anything. Pretty innocuous. The communication from Senator Bonisek was a, was a letter congratulating us for the fifth consecutive year of being an outstanding community school for education.
For music education.
Yep.
Which is remarkable.
Which is remarkable.
Achievement.
Absolutely. Okay, so can we get a motion to accept the consent agenda?
A second.
So a motion and a second. I just have one thing for the approval of the April 18th minutes. I just want to make a correction. We did, we did review that, and we had that listed backwards, that Brian made the motion, and Amador's second, 2.01, on the April 18th meeting.
Flip one.
Yeah. If we could just switch those two. That's the only correction that I, I came up with. Anybody else? Anything? No?
I do have a few comments and questions. I'll try to keep them brief, because we've got a full house, and I don't want to spend a lot of time on process, but I do have some questions regarding the minutes from the other meeting that we are approving under...
April 6.
Under, which one did you talk about, Doug?
I just talked about the April 18th.
Oh, yes, okay. So 4.01 is the minutes for April 6. So Lisa, bear with me. And I think we can probably work this out upfront without going into details, but, so some of these meetings, we get into some pretty extensive discussions with a lot of questions and all, and we have the videotape that actually has the verbatim of what we say, but the challenge, Lynda, you'll recognize as well, Lisa, is that when you're trying to spell out exactly what conversation happened, that's difficult when there are lengthy conversations. So on the April 18th meeting, the way that was notated was, you know, so-and-so had a question about this topic. It was resolved. We had a long discussion about the budget, for example. On the April 6 meeting, we've done it like we've done in the past, where, you know, the scribe for the meeting is trying to spell out exactly all the words that were said, and that's a challenge, because there's a lot of words said. Right? Lynda's smiling. So there are some, I mean, the fact is that the minutes are the official record of the meeting, and it could be reflected upon years from now in a way that, you know, didn't accurately reflect what was said. So for example, you know, in the discussion, you know, it started off, this is the April 6 minutes, where I had a number of questions about fund balance and health insurance, and then Amador had some very good questions about what we needed to do to reduce our fund balance to the point where, or to reduce our reliance upon the fund balance to the point where we didn't need to utilize it anymore. And those questions didn't get into the minutes. And so I guess the question I'd say is that, when we're going to record the minutes, we have two choices, which is to be very brief about the topic that was discussed and who asked the question, and not try to spell it out, or to spell it out verbatim, but if you're going to try to spell it out verbatim, you're going to have to capture everything, right? So Amador's question as an example, Lisa, didn't make it into the minutes at all. So I had gotten your email, Lisa, about, you know, here's the draft minutes, and let me know if you have any questions or feedback, and I replied to you and the board to say, "Well, here I think that, you know, here's some places where maybe it could be rectified to be more accurate or encompass some of the questions that were asked." And the response was, "Well, let's bring it up at the meeting and talk about it." Now, I don't want to waste a lot of time talking about it. So we could go through these things one by one, or we could just make an agreement, I think, to say that, in the future, because we have the videotape that actually captures everything we say, let's make the minutes say, you know, "Amador had a question about fund balance." Period. Not what the question was, not what the discussion was at all.
Yes. It should be summary minutes.
I really agree with that.
They should be summary minutes.
Yeah, really summary minutes, because, you know, if you're going to do it the other way, you have to be consistent, and there's too much to ask, I think, of Lisa, right?
Of any given thing. Yes. Because it would just be so much.
We have to remember, Brian, there was a period where I was keeping the minutes. So I'm the one who probably started going overboard with it.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
Which is very easy to do.
Yes.
It is. So the minutes should be summary minutes, and the recording and the video is the backup to the summary, guys.
Absolutely.
Yes, I agree.
Fair enough.
So I would just ask though, guys, because I don't want anything misconstrued or misunderstood, that there's one thing of all the notes that I emailed to you that I just have to insist upon, okay? There was a discussion about the contract that we signed with Quality and Gee Davis, and there was a whole discussion about our commitment to our drivers. In other words, that these contracts wouldn't in any way cause us to take...
What number was that?
Uh, this is in 704. I'm sorry, 704, yeah.
On April 6?
On April 6, yes, April 6, item number 7.04. All right, so under discussion, you'll see there's a question...
Item number 704 is the Eagle Scout.
No, no, on, on April 6.
Yeah. On April 6, 704 is the Eagle Scout.
I'm sorry. There's a discussion under the Eagle Scout for some reason that includes the bus driver contract. Good point. The third paragraph down, Doug Reiser, Amador Laput, and Brian Siegel. Third paragraph under 704, discussion. You see that?
It's the next page. Yeah, next page. At the top. So we have a discussion after the...
Right?
Yeah. Yeah, this is, this is essentially the conversation we're having right now at the end of the consent, is basically what it's about.
Ah, yes, okay, that's what I meant. At the end of the, so regarding the entire consent. But in this particular case, it was actually specifically regarding the contract that we signed with Quality and Gee Davis, okay? So, look, let's just get through this quickly. So it says, "B. Siegel questioned the language in the contract, did not see anything that stipulates contacting our bus drivers first." Okay? The question that I asked was, is there anything in our board policies or our bus drivers' contract that requires the district to utilize our own bus drivers first? That was the gist of my question. And I think, I want to make that clear, because my concern about the bus driver contracts with these private entities is that if in some point in the future, we get into a situation where there's some confusion, that we should make it abundantly clear through our board policies or through our actual bus driver contract, that our bus drivers get the runs first. Okay? Now, I know that's, in the answer, it is in the contract, okay?
Yes, it is.
So that was the question, but that question, I think, I don't want that misconstrued. So again, I'm going to say this, the question I asked specifically, I went to the video just to make sure the language was clear, is there anything in our board policies or our bus drivers' contract that requires the district to utilize our bus drivers, our own bus drivers first? Ms. Lewis commented that their contract is on an unneeded basis, and Dr. Devoe commented that it is service on demand for the company, and it's past practice that we use our bus drivers first. But the question I was asking is, what legally, what legal obligation do we have?
But the next sentence says, "A bus driver's contract has language specific about runs."
Okay, so you want to make a correction?
If I ask for that wording to be sent, for my question to be recorded in the minutes.
So, "B. Siegel questioned the language..."
In the contract.
"...in the bus driver's contract, if there is language in the bus driver contract that stipulates contacting our bus drivers first."
That requires the district to utilize our own bus drivers first. I'm just not comfortable with past practice. I understand the way that it works, you know, when you get into a bind, and the contracts are what protect people.
Anything else?
No, everything else is minor stuff, so I just, I think that it's great that we agreed that we're going to summarize, and then let the video speak.
Yep. Very good.
I do have additional questions about the agenda, though.
About the consent agenda?
Yes.
So, so right now, so far, we've amended the April 6, the April 6 minutes and the April 18, slightly, but however, we've had, we have amended them. Okay, questions?
Yes. I have a question about item number 8.01.
That's, that's not part of the consent agenda.
It's not?
704 is the last one.
No?
Okay. I have no more questions?
Anybody else? Questions? Comments? Concerns? Okay, then let's vote. Brian?
I'm sorry, Doug, I just don't see where the consent agenda is spelled out. Let me just make sure.
4.01 to 7.03, right at the top of the page.
Oh, yes, okay, yes.
Okay?
Yep.
Okay?
Yes.
All right, so your vote is?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Carol?
Yes.
Lynda?
Yes.
Amador?
Yes.
And I'll say yes, thank you. So, again, we're working through this, so I'm going to insert old business slash new business. Before rules of the vote, okay? Any old business that we need to attend to, folks?
We're back on tonight's.
Excuse me?
We're back on tonight's.
We're both back on tonight's.
I mean, give her them, right?
Yeah, we're back on tonight's, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, after 7.03, we didn't, we didn't enter an old business slash new business or a public comment for that matter.
Are you looking for comments on old business or new business?
I'm looking for any old business that we need to attend to. Any new business?
I do. Anybody else?
So, Scott?
I have the district newsletter, and I got this in the mail today, and I see the first page has a message from your Board of Education. And I was, I see my signatures on here, right, along with all of yours, but I have never seen this letter before. So I'm wondering if any of you guys have seen the letter that our signatures appear upon?
What, what, why, it's not the same one, look. Oh, that's a budget newsletter.
This came in the mail, literally just today.
Oh, okay. So I haven't seen it yet.
Yeah, so I said, "Message from your Board of Education filed." This must be something we approved at a previous meeting.
It was shared with me. It was shared with me, and I just assumed that everyone got the same letter. I apologize.
Where'd the letter come from?
From, from...
It was drafted in the district office and sent to Mr. Reiser.
But it's not from the board president, it's from the Board of Education.
I understand. My fault. That's, that's my fault. I didn't realize it didn't, you know, that it didn't go to everyone.
You thought it went to everyone when it went to you?
Yeah, I did. That's totally my fault.
Look, I don't mean to put you on the spot, Doug. Normally, I'd have a chance to call you, and we talk about this stuff in advance in the meeting, but, you know, this came in the mail today, and interestingly, we did have a discussion as a board about other things this week, about, you know, the email on the Netflix series and all, so...
Sure.
I was, I went back through all my minutes from like the entire year to see if maybe we had, you know, voted on this language. And we haven't, so that's the reason I'm asking the question, is that we need to, you know, we're only a board when we're in public in this room like this, as the five of us. And to have a letter from the Board of Education, I think we ought to do it that way.
I don't disagree with you. My apologies. I did not realize that it only went to me. I just assumed that it had gone to everyone, so I'm sorry.
If it's not commentary about the content of the letter, I didn't read beyond the first paragraph. I recognized early on that it wasn't something I had seen. So I would just ask that in the future, if we, you know, put our signatures on something, that we do that as a board, you know, under open meetings law and the way that we're supposed to do it, so that's all I have under new business.
Sorry. Okay, any other new business? Okay, that brings us to public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, Doug, we, are we going to go over eight?
Right after public comment.
Okay, very nice.
Yeah, so we totally missed the whole business, new business.
Okay, no problem.
So, my fault.
All right.
That's my second. Any public comment, ladies and gentlemen? Yes, ma'am?
Hi, that's Yerben from Eldred. I just wanted to put it out on the record that I've been reading a lot of and hearing some negative things about our district being put into local papers and whatnot in the past recent weeks. And it is concerning to me to be reading these things more often than reading things that are positive, written in editorials. So I would like to, in addition to having things that are moving the district forward and expressing concerns about the district, to also have the public rewriting positive things into editorials, because we do have a really great district. And as we heard about earlier, there's many wonderful things happening. We have wonderful students, we have wonderful teachers, we have wonderful programs, and so to get those things out in the public eye as well. My concern is that there's talk about people moving out of the district and concern about enrollment, which is a New York State problem, not just an Eldred problem. But if I were to Google Eldred School District, editorials like that would be coming up. And if people were reading that, then they might not choose our district to send their child to, when we know that is a good place to send their child. So it is my hope that people will start to be expressing their positive feedback as well as negative feedback into the public domain. Well said.
Anyone else?
I have a question.
Yes?
How do you stop that Google?
Can you, can you...
How do you stop it?
Can you tell us who you are, ma'am? I'm sorry. Just for our records.
Beatrice Amato. I probably pronounced the word wrong, but how do you really stop it? You know what I'm saying? What she say, how do you stop it? People do what they want, put you in the speech, blah, 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 blah. Very few people want to tell you something good about themselves. I could tell you an example. There goes a goose across the road. You've got a bunch of little geese, right? As soon as you pick up one of those little geese, what's going to happen? Your way is going to get you. Right? All those things, how do you stop it? Answer that?
It's a good question.
Can't stop it. You're after it.
Can I respond?
Yeah.
So, thank you. I think that, you know, at least at the board table, you know, it's over the past, you know, at the board table, we, we address all the positive things. I'm always careful to make sure that I've recognized the things that I participate in as a board member that are positive, and there's a lot of them. You know, for example, the stuff that I talked about at Mackenzie. I mean, I've really seen that, you know, and that's a tribute to everybody, including the decisions that the board makes. But at the same time, you know, there are issues that we all need to address as a board as well. And so it's important to recognize all the positive things that we do, as well as identify opportunities to make things better. We're all trying to make things better, you know? So I would encourage everybody in the public to participate in the board process, because the board really is where we set policy, we discuss issues and all. It'd be great to see more people come in here, and then whatever you observe in the schools or at the board meeting or throughout any of your interactions with the school district, to share those with others. Letters to the editor are one way to do that. The more communication, the better, because then we could recognize all the positive things, use them as examples to do even more, and then also recognize some of our shortcomings and address them immediately. So I appreciate your comments, both of you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Public comment? Going twice? Very good.
I'm going to ask Brian's question before we proceed.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Brian, your question about 8.01?
Oh, yes, okay. So I do have a question, I have a series of questions about number 8.01, section F. Speak to the four of you. It's the most important, you hear my comments. I have no interest in the outcome of anything that's in the ballot, whether it's the budget, the school bus, the lease, the library, the school board election, but I do have an interest in the way that we manage the election. And so I have some questions with regards to that. I'd say with regards to the school board candidates' election, that's the one that's closest to my heart, I would just say that I appreciate my colleague Doug and your challenger Allison, both of you for standing up and volunteering to do this thankless job. And I appreciate that. So, anyway, it's important, because some accusations were made against the board and its conduct of elections in the past, and I want to make sure that it doesn't repeat itself. So if I look at section F, it spells out the qualifications for voting at the annual meeting, all right? And I just want to clarify this, because it differs from my understanding of school law and New York State elections law, and I think we need to make sure that we clarify that before we vote on this. Section number, item number one under section F is that the voter must be a citizen of the United States. Absolutely. Must be 18 years of age or older. Yes. Must be a resident of the school district for 30 days or more preceding the date of the vote. Absolutely. Must be registered for the general election and meet qualifications of number three above. That's not accurate. And number five, must have registered for permanent voter registration with the Eldred School. That's not accurate either, okay? So let me just explain why. Number four, number five are not accurate. School board elections and votes on school budgets and referendums relating to school board and district functions are governed by New York State education law. It's different for a lot of voters when they come in to vote in these school board elections in that most elections that they participate in in November are managed by New York State elections law and also under the jurisdiction of the county board of elections. Our elections are managed under New York State education law explicitly, with some references to election law, just in places where the education law doesn't specify certain things, but they're under our jurisdiction as a board of education and the people that we appoint to run our elections. With regards to the eligibility of voters, there are two ways that you can be eligible to vote in a school board election. You can either be a registered voter with the Sullivan County Board of Elections within the district, okay? So you're either within Highland, within Lumberland, or within the portions of Deer Park or Tustin that actually are in our district. Period. You do not, if you are a registered voter with the Sullivan County Board of Elections or the Orange County Board of Elections for that little road in Deer Park. You don't have to be registered with the school. There's no stipulation to be registered with the school. So I just want to make sure that if a voter comes in to vote in our elections and they are registered to vote in, you know, general elections as a general voter, that they don't have to undergo some sort of, you know, proof that they're registered with the school district or some other process.
And they have the, we have a copy of the county voter rolls.
So I see number five, though, it says, "Must have registered for permanent voter registration with the Eldred School."
You know what? I think at one time there was an and or there...
Because this has been carried over from year to year. It doesn't always...
This language differs from what we had in our legal notice in the River Report and the Sullivan County Democratic...
But the agenda that you're reading is carried over from year to year. So if there was an error, that error was probably made a while back.
I just want to make sure that it's clear. I mean, is that our, our understanding, right, as a board? Does everybody agree that...
So you don't have to register to vote?
No, there must be a registered voter.
Let's say that...
But not a registered voter at the school district?
It's either in the school district, because somebody can register with the school...
I think there was an and or there.
No, but somebody can register with the school and not be registered with the county board of elections and vote in the government.
Or vice versa.
Or vice versa. They can be registered with the county, not with us, and vote.
And still can vote.
So let me just...
Registered with the county, but not with us, and still can vote. So I think it is...
And there's no separate... So let's say I'm Joe Schmo. I've never voted in a school board election before. I'm not in the school's registration book. I'm not directly registered, because, so school boards in New York State have the ability to decide whether we want to do direct voter registration or not. We have chosen that we do. So in other words, you don't have to be registered with the county board of elections to vote in a school board election. You can choose to not register with the county board of elections and still register directly with us. We've chosen to do that as a board. That's a longstanding practice in Eldred. But let's say that I'm Joe Schmo. I've never registered with the school. It's my first time ever voting in a school board election. I show up next week and I say, "I want to vote." There's, what happens?
You have the county vote, the county...
I have the county list. I will look it over. At that juncture, if they're on that, then they will fill out one of their signature cards saying that there's three questions. If they're over 18, United States citizen, and if they're a resident for 30 days. They will check those and then they can vote.
But why do they need to, I'm sorry, if, or, yeah. So I guess I'm unclear as to why there's a separate process for folks to have to sign that signature card.
It's either or.
Right.
No, but I want to be able to show up and say, "Hey, I'm Brian Siegel. I live on Hillside Road in Berryville. I'm registered with the Sullivan County Board of Elections. I would like to vote," and not have to sign anything with the school district, right?
You'll just have to, like I said, fill out your signature card, that's all.
Because you sign in with the...
Oh, so it's for the book?
Yeah.
I don't have to show proof of residency?
You should show proof of residency. You should show your license. I would require it.
But that card is the signature card that all voters sign?
Yeah.
So that's filled out at the time, once you're verified in the county elections.
So can we just add the word "or" to number four?
Well, actually, I think if you delete number five...
I mean, the thing is that in our legal notice...
I didn't delete it.
...that was published in the newspapers, it's entirely accurate and representative of like the law of state. So here's what it says. I'll just read the relevant part. It says, it's talking about who's eligible to register with the district. It talks about people registered with the school, and it says, "Except a person who is otherwise qualified to vote and is registered under the provisions of Article 5 of the election." So it's talking about New York State law. So it's clear there that we know what we're doing when we publish, but in this agenda, it's not accurate.
Okay, so what should we do then? Put "or" or eliminate number five?
Can I see what you're reading from? Because I don't have the...
Oh, yeah, so I'm sorry. This is our legal notice.
Yeah, I don't have it with me.
I'll pass this down. This is the legal notice that was published in the River Reporter and the Sullivan County Democratic.
So how can we resolve this?
Well, let me...
Yeah, let's read that.
Give me a second.
Could be the "or," we might just read...
Brian, what part, where are you reading from?
It's highlighted.
The and or.
Well, it's stated in the...
Yeah, but the and or, it's two words, it's supposed to change it all then. You want that?
Yeah.
That's fine, that's fine. That lays out voter qualifications, so that's fine. The residency is fine.
So if you're looking at the, our agenda, number four is also inaccurate, because it says, "Must be registered for the general election and meet qualifications number three above." The fact is that folks don't have to be registered for the general election. You can choose to vote in a school board election and not ever register with the county board of elections.
That's why I shouldn't say "or."
Yeah.
Can I make a motion? Just and/or, and then that completes the whole thing?
You don't even need "and," you just say "or."
Or. Must be registered for the general election.
Or registered with Eldred. Period.
Because "and" tells you you have to put "or" and "five."
Rather than, oh, change the whole thing?
Yeah. It must be registered with the county board of election or the school district.
Look at that.
Right, right.
Right here in our, that's how we put it in the... Right here in our newsletter, the budget newsletter, it says, "Must be registered with the school district or registered for general election."
Just left out.
Yes.
Okay, no big deal.
That's correct.
Use that language.
All right.
Yeah. Right? You see that on the top right front?
Yeah, resident of the school district, so 30 days prior to May 16th.
Does that complete?
Must be registered for the school district or registered for general election.
Yeah. Brian, was there anything else other than that?
Yes.
So where is, that could be stupid, but where did the "or" go?
There is, "or" and "five" comes out and it's being replaced with "must be registered with the school district or registered for the general election."
That's how we put it in the newsletter.
Exactly the way that it's, yeah, the newsletter is entirely accurate. Under, yeah, under qualifications for voting, it spells it out perfectly.
Okay.
Okay, good.
So, yeah, I just, an additional question about people that are registered...
Can I see that?
Yeah.
Sorry.
It's under qualification for voting on the inside left page. So because we maintain our own voter rule, there are some differences between our voter rule and the voter rule that we receive from the county board of elections. My understanding is, we get a copy of the county's voter rule 30 days prior to the election, and then some, a supplement, I think, 10 days before the election. But there are people that are in our school book who have since, you know, deceased or moved away from the school district who have not been purged from our voter rolls. And so therefore, if they present to vote, they can, even though they should be removed. So for example, let's say that I'm a registered voter in Eldred. I'm registered with the county board of elections. I also sign the signature card, I get into our voter rule, but then I move away, and I register in some other jurisdiction. What happens is that when I register in that other jurisdiction, they notify the Sullivan County Board of Elections that I have re-registered as a voter elsewhere, and then I'm now purged from the Sullivan County Board of Elections. So I go down to the Highland Town Hall to vote, and they say, "Hey, you can't vote anymore because you've moved away." In our voter file, we have a significant number of people who have been purged from the Sullivan County Board of Elections voter rule, but still remain in our voter role as a school district. And so my question is, what is the process for that voter roll to be updated when people need to be purged as eligible voters?
So what I can explain to you, what I do is that I have gotten the list and then I go over one by one, address changes, name, if, even if they got married, look that over. I make the changes. If they are deceased or moved, that card gets pulled out. So if there's somebody in that book that had moved, it's maybe they didn't notify Sullivan County because I go specifically on what they give me.
So in other words, you're saying we've got our voter roll, we've got Sullivan County. If I find somebody in our voter roll who's not in Sullivan County, I now modify our voter roll.
Absolutely. And if you'd like to see the process, you can come up and see me and I'll show you what I've done this year. I go specifically with what Sullivan County and Orange County gives me.
So isn't.
And if they're not on that list, that card gets pulled out.
Okay.
And then at that point, when they come to vote, then it's going to be questioned at that time. They'll have to produce residency proof to me to see why they were taken off at that juncture. But I do. I went through everybody. I can't speak for what happened before me, unfortunately. But I can tell you what I've done this year. That's what I've done.
Bonnie used to do the same thing. She would purge the books.
Again, I'm not going back in time. I just want to make sure that, you know, people who vote are allowed to vote.
Okay.
And I'm sorry.
Is it possible that we missed a few times in there when the list came out and whoever was in charge?
Anything's possible.
Right.
Is there any, is there any remedy for that now then? How do we, how do we, is there any remedy for that to go? I know it sounds tedious too.
It's only as accurate as the list we get from the county.
Okay.
Yeah, right. Yeah, which of course has its own nature.
Sure.
Yeah, because it's whatever people fill out on a piece of paper. So, all right, I just have a question. I've, again, I just want to make sure that the outcome of the election is not questionable in any way. And so as I looked into the rules, it turns out that as a school board, we are charged with designating a board of registration, which needs to be done 30 days, sorry, no later than 30 days after our annual meeting. And I don't recall doing that. Do we have a board of registration that's comprised of four qualified voters that constitute our board of registration? Does anybody know? Do we have a board of registration that we voted upon? So.
What do they do? We used to.
They serve in a capacity to determine who's an eligible voter and to, you know, manage the elections. And we're responsible under school law to do that.
What are those people that are?
Those are the people we appoint to vote judges.
No, that's different. Those are the elections inspectors. There's a, I'm sorry, I'll just read this. So this actually comes from the New York State school law. So each year, no later than 30 days after each year's annual meeting, school boards must designate four qualified voters to constitute a board of registration. The panel serves until 30 days after the next annual meeting or election of the district. And they determine who are the eligible voters to participate in school board elections.
By going through that list that Lisa goes through? Is that how they would determine?
The problem is that the district clerk actually is not allowed to serve on the board of registration because the district clerk can only serve on the board of registration if the district clerk is a registered qualified voter in the school district.
So in other words, we've done this in-house. We haven't done that. But by law, we should be doing that.
Yeah, and I don't know if it, you know.
Finding four volunteers? There you go.
Done. Next time. Okay.
Oh, silly person, yeah.
No, we can do that for the future then. We'll find four volunteers. That's one less thing Lisa has to do.
So two more questions with regards to our elections inspectors. The elections inspectors are the folks who actually manage the voting place and the rules and monitor for the fair and equitable elections. We appointed them at the last meeting.
Right.
How do we, do we choose from a list of folks to determine who our elections inspectors are? Or how do we, well, we pick elections inspectors.
It's a county list, right?
We get, we get the list from the county and we've been using the same individuals for the last several years. And as long as they've been valid voting inspectors, those are the names that I bring to the board.
So each year, we get a list of?
Yeah, there's about, I think there's eight names on the list this year.
So the, again, it's not about individual people. But the issue that I have is that more than one of our appointed elections inspectors are not certified elections inspectors with Sullivan County Board of Elections.
The names that you voted on are all on the approval list. I saw the list, Brian. Would you like to share the name which is not?
No.
That doesn't help us then. So you're making a statement, but you're not indicating who the individual is.
I'm not going to call it anybody individuals.
Lisa and I both got the list from the county and looked it over.
All right, we'll try to move on. The, finally, and this is the most important because there were some accusations made against our board and the way that we managed our elections last year. Again, the way that we run our elections, it's under our jurisdiction as a board in the district, okay? And it's under the New York State education law, not under New York State elections law, which governs all the other elections that our board participates in. When they go to town of Lumberland Hall or town of Highland Hall, they are voting under New York State elections law. And there are very specific language in New York State elections law that governs the privacy and the sanctity of the private ballot, the secret ballot. In other words, that you should never know if you're working in an election, how people vote, how they mark their ballot. You should look at their ballot. You shouldn't go anywhere really near the ballot. You shouldn't handle it. In fact, you should have privacy sleeves. In New York State education law, there are no specifications aside from that we should have privacy booths. And there's really no distance measurements or anything like that, just that you should have a privacy booth. But I think that, you know, to make sure that we don't have any questions about our election, that we ought to, as a board, agree that the way that we manage our election is under New York State elections law in terms of the privacy of the ballot because that's what people are used to in November when they vote, that people can't touch their ballots, look at their ballots, handle their ballots in any way. So what I'd like to do is just read the relevant section from New York State elections law, section 8202, on the privacy of the ballot. Basically says that the ballot scanners, the ballot marking devices and privacy booths shall be placed at least four feet from the table used by the inspectors in charge of the poll books. The guardrail should be at least three feet from the machine and the table used by the inspectors. Now here's the important part, because this responds directly to some comments that were made at previous school board meetings. The election inspectors shall not themselves be or allow any other person to be in any position or near any position that will permit one to see or ascertain how a voter votes or how she or how he or she has voted. In other words, that the inspectors shouldn't ever look at the ballot or touch the ballot, nor shall they permit any other person to be less than three feet from the ballot scanner, ballot marking device, or privacy booth while occupied. Again, it's the rules that voters are used to when they come into a polling place that differ in what we're required to do as a board. But I think that it's certainly within our discretion as a board to say that we would ask for our elections inspectors to abide by that statute.
Okay. I think that's fine.
I'm good with that.
I mean, you're still going to have the one person sitting next to it. Oh, do we still have that?
Sitting next to the.
We do.
Pulling the string?
Oh, there's no string.
Well, yeah, there's no, there's no machine. But there should be really no handling of the, of the ballot. Now, I'm not asking for the board.
Does anyone handle the ballot besides the person?
Well, they do. Yes.
Doing what? Don't you, I don't remember. What do you have to do after you write your ballot up?
Well, what you should do is you should go to the private booth. You should select your ballot. You should take it to the machine that's scanning. And the expectation should be that that ballot is never glanced at, looked at.
So who scans it if the person doesn't scan it themselves?
You can ask for assistance in scanning your ballot. But in the county elections, you're required to have a privacy sleeve in which that the person who's assisting you, which is certainly reasonable that if somebody should assist you, should have a privacy sleeve where the ballot goes to the machine without the person being able to look at the ballot. We don't have that in education law. That's New York State elections. We're not under any obligation to do that or spend money on it. And I'm not suggesting we do. I'm just saying that as a workaround, we ought to inform our elections inspectors that under no circumstances, or so they should try everything humanly possible to avoid looking at the ballot.
Sure, sure. Okay, okay. Fine.
All right?
Yeah.
I'm good with that.
Do we need a motion to incorporate New York State elections law into our?
Do we need a motion to?
I'm glad to pass down the language.
I, I think we can assure you we will put that in place.
I'm satisfied.
But without talking to the attorney, I don't know a legal answer to your other question. Does that make sense? I don't know what the procedure is to make a motion on that because we are governed by SED law.
Absolutely.
So we can implement that in the short term and I can check it out in the long term.
Everybody good?
Good.
Lisa, you're on.
I'm on. Section 802, the president of the Board of Education or designee will read the call of the meeting.
Wait, wait, wait.
Oh, I apologize. I'm going way ahead of myself. I do apologize. Section 801, the board president or designee will review the meeting rules of order and the qualification of voters. A, during the public comment portion of this meeting, each speaker should identify him or herself and state their town of residence. B, speakers need to be acknowledged prior to speaking. C, questions must pertain to the propositions. One question at a time per person. D, the moderator reserves the right to close discussions. E, voting will take place on Tuesday, May 16, 2017, at the Eldred Junior/Senior High School in Eldred, New York, between the hours of 11:00 a.m. and 9:00 p.m. F, qualifications for voting at the annual meeting. One, must be a citizen of the United States. Two, must be 18 years of age or over. Three, must be a resident of the school district for 30 days or more preceding the date of the vote. Four, must be registered with the school district or registered for the general election. G, there will be one digital scanning voting machine. Registration books will be divided by last names. There will be information available pertaining to the use of the voting machine and a ballot on display. H, the closing of the voting will take place at 9:00 p.m. on May 16, 2017, providing all present have been given the opportunity to cast a ballot. I, the custodian of the vote will oversee the registration and voting. The custodian will verify all results with the voting inspectors. Section 802, the president of the Board of Education or designee will read the call of the meeting. Notice is hereby given that the public hearing of the qualified voters of the Eldred Central School District, the school district, a school district of the state of New York located in the counties of Orange and Sullivan, will be held at the Eldred Central Junior/Senior High School in Eldred Central School District on May 4, 2017, at 7:00 p.m. prevailing time for the presentation of the proposed budget for the following school year. The budget will be available for review no later than May 2, 2017, and thereafter at both school buildings and the school district office. Notice is further given that the annual meeting of the qualified voters of the school district will be held at the Eldred Junior/Senior High School, Eldred, New York, on May 16, 2017, between the hours of 11:00 a.m. and 9:00 p.m. prevailing time, at which time the polls will be open to vote by voting machine upon the following items. A, the adoption of the following proposition, Proposition Number One, school budget. The Board of Education of the Eldred Central School District is hereby authorized to expend $17,100, what, I'm just going to say 172, 172, during the 2017-2018 school year. B, the adoption of the following proposition, Proposition Number Two, Sunshine Hall Free Library. The Board of Education of the Eldred School District is hereby authorized to levy taxes annually in the amount of $14,500 and to pay over such monies to the Board of Trustees of the Sunshine Hall Free Library. C, the adoption of the following proposition, Proposition Number Three, bus leases. The Board of Education of the Eldred Central School District is hereby authorized to enter into a lease agreement to acquire 1466 passenger buses, 124 passenger school bus and 120 passenger school bus equipped with wheelchair access. The term of lease shall be five years at a cost not to exceed $1,405,000, which shall be raised by a tax upon the taxable property in the school district to be levied and collected in annual installments in such years and in such amounts as may be determined by the Board of Education. D, election of Board of Education members. The qualified voters, excuse me, of the Eldred Central School District are authorized to elect one candidate as a member of the Board of Education to serve a five-year term beginning July 1, 2017, and ending June 30, 2022. Section 8.03, at this time, the business administrator and superintendent will answer questions pertaining, pertaining, excuse me, to the propositions during this period of public comment. Public comment may begin.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Is Lisa R. Almatasak?
Yes.
The position is required.
Just like Bonnie was last year.
So she's going to oversee now?
The district clerk does the reading of that now. That was a redundant position. It was many years ago, but not anymore. We discontinued that last year.
So she can, district clerk can oversee the budget?
No, she's overseeing the procedures.
The election.
The election.
The procedure, right. Not the budget, the procedure.
That data.
We didn't have one last year either, did we?
Just be a nosy, yeah, no. I went up to the news here last year because a lot of questions came, but there wasn't.
The president or the designee. You want to meet my designee?
Are there any other questions from the audience? Yes, Mr. Clark.
My name's Paul Clark from town of Lumberland. Two meetings ago, Mr. Dr. Dufour, you assured me that we were not cutting any services for the children. You also assured me that we were back for all positions that had been eliminated. The word in the town is that there's only going to be one pre-K class this year. Now, I have the school district report card from '15-'16. It says 36 students in pre-K. If we are eliminating a pre-K classroom, does that mean that we lost that many students? And how, if you only have one classroom and there's more than 18 students that want to have the program, how are we going to do that?
Right now, pre-K registration is ahead of last year and it is our intent to have two pre-K classes next year.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Yes.
I apologize if you said this. It's very difficult to hear. But back here, are you the custodian of the vote?
I'm sorry. Could you state your name?
My name is Lisa Stuntz. I live in Bloodstead. Oh, my question is who is the custodian of the vote right now? And I apologize if you did say that. It's very difficult to hear.
The district clerk is, runs this part of the district meeting. So yes, she would be the.
I appreciate the research that Mr. Siegel did for the vote. Does the district have an independent auditor for the vote?
No, there is no independent auditor for the vote. We're not required to.
Okay.
Can I say that the one thing that I did observe as I was doing some research into this is that any qualified voter within the district, anybody who's eligible to vote, is basically the auditor. So anybody who participates and is eligible to participate can observe the conduct of the election and question any aspect of the election with regards to the conduct of it, with regards to other voters' eligibility to vote. And so that's on all of us as voters. And so that's, that's the auditor, I guess.
Anyone else have questions?
Okay, at the conclusion of our public comment session, the meeting will remain open and be reconvened by the district clerk on Tuesday, May 16, 2017, at 11:00 a.m., when voting will open. Thank you.
Thank you.
No motions? Oh, yeah.
It's a long meeting.
Are you going right up to the order? Are you going back to your office?
No, I'll put this in my office. All right.
She's in the process.
This is, this is her first. This is my first.
So what would that mean, Lisa? What would that mean? What are we saying? So what's, what is the title? I'm sorry. I'm so sorry. For the budget.
The custodians of the vote. So this should say.
No, she is the custodian. She is the custodian. She has to be the custodian. She would be the custodian. What was that? What was that?
They're the, are they inspectors?
Inspector Valash. You would be the inspector. She is the, she is the custodian.
And that is right.
You're the inspector. She is the custodian.
Because that's where I get confused with the wording.
You're the inspector.
You know, you did this.
Allison's good. Very good.